I'm going to start. Okay, this is the December 19th, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board. It is now 7:30. And all Planning Board members are present with the exception of Herman Lilia, who is absent. So we will start the Planning Board meeting as per the agenda with public discussion. Oh, here's Herman Lilia right now. So all Planning Board members are present.
Mr. Herman?
Hi.
Out of the sickness comes life.
Okay. Any public discussion? No public discussion?
Z Sappola, 92 Granite Street. Last night at the DPW Commissioners Meeting, after the meeting, I think it was, or at least during a break in the meeting, Larry Neal, who is quite knowledgeable about what's going on in the town, who knows where he gets all his information, but he gets it, told us that he had heard a rumor that the Peg Leg Parking Lot is a likely candidate for a site for condominiums. It's a fact that the Peg Leg is up for sale. That was brought out at a Selectman's Meeting a few months ago when they had the licensing for the remaining part of the year up at issue. And they said that they wanted to get through the year and then they were going to put it up for sale. So while I'm bringing that to your attention, you might want to speak with Larry Neal, those of you that are interested in the commercial developments downtown. And it probably is, maybe is, a rumor, but it just seemed to me that that's a pretty big chunk of real estate, a big parking lot, to be going into condos to residential uses if that's what happens. So it's just, I think, worth being aware of.
Thank you.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. My sieve brain. Z, speaking of Larry Neal, reminds me Larry Neal mentioned in passing, I can't quite get the context at that meeting, he's one of the DPW Commissioners, that there'll be a new house going up back of Granite Pier, and apparently at the end of Gul Cove Lane. And I wondered about that. That was part of the try-in property. There were two houses cheek by jowl on the street, one of which was hacked into two condominiums and perhaps has been sold. The sign has come down. They're working on the other, the larger one. But that property goes all the way down to the water. It was a number of different lots, all told, I think it was a bit over an acre. But the lane, Gul Cove Lane, goes down to that property and actually on maps goes as far as the water through the property. And apparently, the end of that lane, just past the second house on that lane, is the site, to be the site of a house, and it's gone before the Conservation Commission. And I wondered, hearing that and having not heard anything about it before, why it didn't come here? Because would that lane be an adequate access and how could there possibly be frontage on it for a house? I wondered if you'd heard anything and if you'd check it out with the building inspector.
Well, I haven't heard anything, but we will check it out. Tom, you're more familiar with this, aren't you?
Which property was this again?
This is Gul Cove Lane.
Gul Cove Lane.
Gul Cove Lane.
Yeah, they're building on the Coastal Bank, which is another concern. I don't know that we should encourage that.
Well, the question is whether this board has any jurisdiction.
You know how it happens to your grief and cost that the building inspector thinks that perhaps should come here sometimes, you know? So I would think it might make sense to check it out.
Okay. Thank you.
And was there a road and frontage?
I think the other concern might fall under our purview if we have bylaws about building in flood zones. On the Coastal Bank is related to that.
Okay.
Please speak louder. I'm Jeff.
Now, my comment was that we have bylaws about building in flood zones and building on a coastal bank is a related issue that maybe we should consider.
Well, I would give him a call, find out what his views are. Okay. Unless anybody has an objection, I'd like to switch the old business, which is our zoning, with the new business, which is the A&R that's here, just for the sake of the applicant. And the applicant is Enid Wise, who's represented by Elaine Byrne, counsel. Yeah, let me just, I'll give everyone a Reader's Digest version here. What happened was that the two existing lots owned by Enid Wise, they were actually owned by her and her husband, and they were both conveyed to her. And what happened was, the surveyor, when he did the map for the conveyance, indicated on the map that the two lots were to be combined into one, which was not the intention. But anyway, that's the map that got filed?
Yeah, that's the map that got recorded.
That's correct? And then that got recorded, and apparently now the Wises, through their counsel, want to undo what was essentially a mistake and to now, you know, create two lots and therefore create the two lots that were there. And now they're here for an A&R to do that because apparently the registry, deed registry will only accept that to undo this. And there's also another side issue, it's not even an issue, but just that there was some property that the Wises acquired by adverse possession in 2015. But that really doesn't have anything to do with this issue, correct?
Well, I originally came before the board two years ago.
This board?
This board. And that was the plan that was recorded.
Why don't you announce your presence, by the way?
I'm sorry. I'm Elaine Byrne, and I'm the attorney for...
Is that mic on? Is it on green?
I don't know, but I can, oh, it is.
Okay.
It's green.
Good. You have to speak into it.
Okay. And I came before the board almost two years ago, representing Enid and David Wise. I did not notice the little connector. That's my fault. And the surveyor had put that in, thinking that they were going to combine the two lots. And none of us were paying any attention to that because my role was only to represent them before the land court in Boston. Because they had an adverse possession claim against what is now called Shaylen Lou, who was the owner of the property next door. Some of you may have been on the board then. And that was my focus. I had to go into the land court. It was kind of an involved process. They changed their name and, you know, the, I forget, they have this long involved name for that Shaylen Lou. So I did that and I recorded the plan. After I recorded the plan, I got a call from David Wise, who was very upset when he received his tax bill and he only received one tax bill. Couldn't understand why he only got one tax bill. Went down to the assessors and they said, "Well, you merged the two lots." And he said, "No, I didn't. I have two lots and I've always paid taxes on two lots." And they said, "No, no, no." And then he looked at the plan and then they showed it to him. So he called me and said, "What do I do?" So I called the engineer and the engineer said, "I assumed he wanted to do that." He said, "That was my error." And he said, "I will repair that. I'll, you know, I'll do a new plan." So he did. He did the new plan and that's why I'm before you...
Which is the one that's on the table there.
Right.
And also, by the way, the plan, the mistaken plan is also there, too. And you can see the connectors.
And he, and the only change on the plan, from the plan that came before you before, is the removal of the connector. That's all it is. And it specifies right on there that that's the reason that we're bringing this plan to you. We're not doing anything else. We're just changing it back to the way it was before. And he doesn't mind paying taxes on two lots. He just wants it back the way it was. And that's it.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
How far back do the two lots go?
Oh, way before they purchased it. The Sheldon, they purchased it from the Sheldons and that, I believe, was in the '70s.
As two lots.
Yeah, it was two lots then. It says on there when those lots were done up.
Yeah, they bought it in the 1970s.
Yeah. And it was, those lots were laid out on Brooks Road for a long, long time before then. That's an old, old plan. So it's nothing new. And they're not going anywhere. They're both, you know, advanced in age. David is in his late 80s and he plans on leaving that property to his children.
So there's no problem in your mind, you're asking us to take two lots and make it one lot?
No, the other way around.
No.
You're asking us to take one lot and make it two lots.
It's always been two lots.
I understand that. But the fact is, right now on paper, it's one lot.
Right.
And the point, and the point is that now we are reversing something that has already been brought to the Essex County Registry of Deeds.
Right.
And we would then be re-establishing or establishing two lots, which are not adequate for that zoning district.
Right. That's right.
Right. So that, to me, is somewhat of a problem. I know what you're asking us to do. But in reality, you're also asking us to establish lots, two lots, that are 12,000 and 13,000 square foot apiece, when minimum lot size in that area is 20,000 square feet.
But again...
Is that not correct?
That is correct. But again, you realize that the majority of the lots on that street...
No, that's not the point. That's not the point. The point is, the point is that right now, as far as the Registry of Deeds is concerned, it's one lot. And you want us to re-establish the two lots, which supposedly existed beforehand.
Yes.
And my concern is whether or not we have the power to do that. That's my concern.
That was my question, too, because the, we have the jurisdiction to make non-conforming lots.
Right. Making non-conforming lots. So I don't know quite on where we should be searching for counsel to support us in our decision to reverse this, but it does give me pause when we are being asked to establish two non-conforming lots.
Well, you already had two non-conforming lots.
No, I understand. I fully understand. But what exists in that one paper and is registered in the Essex South County Registry of Deeds is one lot.
Well, I think what, I understand what you're saying, and that's the question that I had when Ms. Byrne came in.
Right.
The only thing that may be a little different here is that, and this is why I asked for her to produce the deeds up to the most current deed, because the deeds do not indicate that there was an intention to merge the two lots into one lot. If that had been the case, then I think your position would be substantially weakened.
Right.
But what it sounds like is that this was essentially, you know, an error by the surveyor when he did the map that was not detected and the map got filed. So that would be the, I mean, that's the only countervailing factor, is that there wasn't, there was not apparently an intent to combine the lots. And then they go, "Oh, now we want to separate them." And to your point, Herm, yeah, this is not, these lots are both non-conforming. And they were back in the '70s and, you know, I mean, they're the same lots, but they're non-conforming now, so...
So you're saying, you're saying the deeds were never changed?
The deeds were not changed.
No.
The descriptions in the deeds are the same. So that was, that's why I wanted to see the subsequent deed, to make sure that that didn't change anything. Because usually, the deed will say that there's an intent to merge the two lots. And this was just, just on the map, so...
So there are two separate deeds, one for each piece of property. There is not a deed...
It's described in one, it's in one deed.
It's described in one deed?
Yeah, well, they, it describes two parcels in one deed.
As in, two parcels in one deed.
Yeah. They're up there if you want to, if you want to take a look at them. If anybody wants to take a look at them.
Two parcels in one deed. Yeah, no, I had looked at them before.
So that's, you know, that's kind of the way it is.
Is there any alternative to have them be conforming?
Is there an alternative, is there an alternative to have them be conforming?
Yes.
Well, okay. Let's back up. If the map had been done correctly, according to Ms. Byrne, then the map would have shown two separate lots. And she wouldn't be here.
Right.
But because of the way the map described it, it shows one, it shows one lot. So the question is, and maybe we want to, I mean, you know, this is, was filed, what, last week? It was last Friday. So it's, it was Friday, the 12th. I think you brought in the material and did the application. So the question becomes, is, is it 13th?
I brought him in on the, I came in on the 11th.
Yeah, you came in, I spoke with you, and then you dropped, then you filed the application the next day.
The next day.
The next day.
Yeah.
So that would have been the 13th. Because we're operating under a 21-day timeframe from that filing.
Right.
So we need to...
That would be January 3rd, would be three weeks.
So then what's our next, our next meet?
Second.
January 3rd is, we won't meet, is the 21 days.
21 days from the 13th is January 3rd.
Okay. And our meeting is on...
January 2nd.
January 2nd. So, all right. So the, you know, we have three options here. One is approve the A&R as requested. The second one is deny the A&R as requested. And the third is postpone this and ask for a legal opinion concerning the efficacy of what's being done with the idea that the intention was not to merge the two lots. And, you know, whether or not that makes a difference at all. Maybe it doesn't make a difference.
So a quick question. So the deed for these pieces of property, there's one deed for two pieces of property or one piece, depending upon the lot, the plot you're looking at. One deed for it, and that deed is not changing?
The deed has never changed. The deed describes two separate and distinct lots, which were shown on the assessor's plan for all the years that they owned them.
Fine. And the intent years ago, or two years ago, was to combine the two lots into one lot?
No.
The only thing that changed...
Never was it?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
That was never the intention.
Never the intention.
They had a survey done because they had a different legal matter going on.
Oh.
And that's why the survey was done. And according to the attorney, the surveyor or the engineer put the connecting lines in.
Okay.
Here's the map, just so you can see it, anybody interested. Here's the map. And it shows the, I see these two lines, Herm, these two. This was put in by the surveyor. And here, here.
I saw it.
You saw that earlier?
Yeah, I mean, I saw it before. As long as the deed didn't change, I guess I don't, I don't have a problem.
The deed has two certain, says two certain parcels of land, and it describes parcel one and parcel two. And that was, that was in January of 2001. So that was the last, that was the deed to her, from both of them to her.
Right.
That was back in 2001. So that's, that was the last deed of this property. And the deed by itself definitely describes two separate parcels.
So Jason, as an attorney, can you just remind me what supersedes which? The drawing or the deed? The words from the deed or the drawing?
I would say in this case, it would be the language of the deed, whether there was an intent to merge the two. Because the first thing I asked Ms. Byrne was, is there a language in the deed that talks about these parcels being merged?
Right.
Or is this just some surveyor who made a misassumption and prepared a map showing them connected when the deed didn't? You know, there was no conveyance after 2001, so that was the last conveyance. So he just came in and did a map based on that 2001 conveyance, you know, 18 years later. And in the map, he merged, there was no deed except for the one in 2001. And he merged the two on the map. So it wasn't like there was a deed of merger and then he did the map. That would be a different story.
But also, remember, after that plan was drawn, David Wise deeded the parcel that was transferred by the decree. Remember the decree?
Yeah, the adverse possession judgment.
Right.
He deeded that to her.
Right. And he specifically mentioned that there, that it was to be added to parcel one shown on that plan. He didn't say parcel one and two. He described what lot it was to be added to. He didn't say the merged lots.
No, it was in 2015 he did that.
Yeah, in 2015. So he, and that was after that plan was drawn. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
The plan, when was the plan drawn? The one that is at issue?
2015.
So it was just after that.
Yeah. So he did that deed after that plan was drawn.
So there is a deed from 2015?
There's a deed that he deeded the portion of land that he received from the decree from adverse possession, where there was a small parcel of land. And he merged that into one of the lots. And he specified what lot it was to go to. He didn't, and so in his mind, there were still two separate lots. So there were not two merged lot, there was not one lot. There were two separate lots. So he didn't, he didn't see that that had been merged. He didn't know that that happened.
Yeah. My concern is just the steps that did occur and whether or not we can reverse those steps. And we're focusing on the deed as being the most important instrument, document, if you will. And if that be the case, then the error that was made in the drawing is an error that was made in the drawing, which one would think can be reversed. So that's my concern. If others...
Yeah, do we have a letter from the engineer or the surveyor?
Well, he made a statement on the plan only, but not a letter.
A statement that says...
They called me because they asked me for my legal opinion. I sat down with them and I told them. You know, I told them that there would be questions, you know, coming before the board. And I told them what their options were. But I also told them that it was a mistake and it was an honest mistake. I talked to the engineer about it. And he told me it was a mistake and he felt really bad about it.
Were you involved with this?
Yeah, I was involved after that plan had been drawn up.
Who filed the plan? Who actually did it?
Who went to the registry and filed the plan?
Well, who put that motion? Was it the engineer?
Well, David, David went to the engineer before I was ever in the picture. I came in because he called me and asked me if I would represent him in the land court in this adverse possession case.
Had this map already been filed by then?
No. The map had not been filed because the adverse possession case had not been filed in the land court. So I went in the land court and I did all that work. The plan had already been drawn.
But who actually...
I recorded the plan.
You recorded it. So are you saying, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but are you saying you...
Well, I am on the spot because I didn't look at the plan.
Okay, you didn't look at it and see that it was...
I didn't see this little connector.
Yeah, the connector.
I was focused on the registered land portion from the registry, I mean, from the land court. And so I never saw that. So I felt I was at fault. You know, I felt that I was at fault. Byrne felt he was at fault.
Right.
You know, neither one of us knew what the other one was doing because Byrne drew that plan up a couple of years before I was ever involved.
Yeah.
So, you know, we both felt bad about it.
Hey, Toby? Can you sit down? Thank you.
Anybody ready to make a motion?
I would have liked to see, I mean, that little statement that the surveyor put on there doesn't really say anything, except the plan is to, is to reverse what happened. But he doesn't explain, it doesn't explain what actually happened. I'd like to see that in writing and somebody say that.
You want to see something from him, maybe, saying what happened?
That he screwed up and this is what happened and he's taking responsibility for it.
Is that something you think he'd be willing to write?
Yeah, I think he would.
Okay.
I know he feels bad about it.
Sophie, if he wrote that and we approved the A&R, what could happen?
Well, I still, I'm still concerned that whether we actually, I understand that the deed supersedes it and everything, but we are now creating, you know, according to the Registry of Deeds, we're now creating two non-conforming lots. From a conforming lot.
You can put on there, it's an amended plan.
A&R is...
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, the A&R is supposed to be, there's no questions about it, that we're not making notes or anything. So that's my main concern. I don't, I can see the whole thing happening, but, you know...
If there were a statement, as you're suggesting, that these lots pre-existed 1951, when zoning was established, and they are therefore grandfathered in as 12,000, 13,000 square foot lots, owned by the same party, which were inadvertently, inadvertently separated on a, on a figure, to suggest that they were going to become two separate lots as opposed to two parts or, you know, two elements of the same lot under deed? Because the deed only refers to one lot, although there are two parcels. Is that not correct?
No.
No, the deed, the deed refers to two parcels. That's not unusual, though.
Yeah. And not only that, they were never, they're not buildable lots.
No, I understand that.
And they can't be buildable lots because he didn't check aboard them. You know...
Oh, then I misunderstand. So they didn't predate 1951? If they predated 1951, then they would be buildable lots.
Yeah, they're not buildable.
So why does he care?
Because he cares. I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's not an answer.
I've had this big discussion with him. I said, "David, they're not buildable. You can't build on these lots." And I told him, I said, "If you had done this, or you, you know, if you had separated the lots and you had deeded one to Enid, you know, and you kept one in your name, then maybe you could have built on them. Why do you care about this?" He said, "I care." He said, "Who knows what could happen after I die? I want to leave them to my kids." I said, "Okay, you're willing to go through all this? You want to do this? You want to spend all this money?" He said, "Yes, I want to do it."
So let me just get this...
I said, "Okay, we'll do it."
Let me just get this clear, then, because this is an important point.
Yeah.
You agree... You're, you agree that they're not buildable?
Right.
And maybe never would be buildable, but, and your, your client, well, actually not him because she's the owner, but they're husband and wife, okay. So he says, I just want them to be separate because I just want them to be separate. Not for any particular reason. It's not like they're more valuable separate than they would be as one lot. He just wants them to be separate.
Exactly.
So that's all this is about, really?
Exactly. He, he thinks that, that maybe in the future, maybe they will be.
Maybe, maybe we'll make, maybe the town will allow even smaller lots. Is that what you're thinking?
Okay. And what it does, if it's separate, then each party, when he gets rid of them, will pay their taxes as opposed to one big lot where it's like, well, who's going to pay the taxes on both?
He's paying, he's paying the taxes on two lots.
Right, no, but you see, in the future, if he's giving it to his children, then you get a, you could get an argument about, about, well, you know what, I'm not going to pay taxes this year, so you pay all the taxes. I mean, he's trying to avoid all that stuff.
I don't know, but he's been paying taxes on two lots for all these years, so he's continuing to do that. He's willing to do it. I mean, I've talked to him till, you know, till I'm blue in the face.
He's thinking about the future.
Yeah, but he's thinking about his children down the road. And he said, maybe in the future, they may be buildable, who knows, but he'll be dead and gone. He's, he's close to ninety, so I mean, I can't, I can't.
Well, let me make a suggestion to the other board members because I don't, I just don't get the feeling that anyone's comfortable resolving this tonight. So why don't we adjourn it to the next meeting in January, first meeting in January, and run this by town council? There really aren't, the facts aren't in dispute. And just say, this is what happened, and can we do this?
And we get that letter, right?
See what she says. And in the meantime, we'll, you'll get a letter from the surveyor saying that this was in, you know, that this combination of the two lots was inadvertent and no one had instructed him to do that, that he did it mistakenly on his own. And it should have been two lots and not one lot, to that effect.
Okay, that's not a problem.
Okay.
See, that's another component. Yeah, it's fine. And I'd like, prefer that because I think there's the other element. The other element is that if the lots predated nineteen fifty-one, then they are buildable lots. If they predated zoning.
Well, they may be, but, you know.
No, but that's important. Because if they predated zoning, then I can see full well why he would want to make sure that they are still listed as two separate lots. Now, we just have to resolve, just have to establish that either they were or they were not preexisting.
But they would have to be in separate ownership in order for them to be buildable lots.
No, no, what Herman, what Herman's getting at is if those lots existed before nineteen fifty-one, then they are buildable.
Even though they're substandard.
Yeah, because they would have been grandfathered in.
But they have to be shown on a plan and they had to be.
They're shown on that plan as two separate lots.
Yeah, but they, but they also have to be held in separate ownership.
I think what she's correct. They have to be, now, if they're owned by the same person, they're, they're effectively merged.
Oh, okay.
You know, they merge.
Okay, if that's what the state law says, then fine.
Yeah, they've merged.
Okay, all right.
Because they would, they would, that's what I was trying to.
I just don't, the only thing that bothers me is that, I mean, I understand this was a mistake, but is your client's kind of desire to have them separate even though there's no?
That's his prerogative.
Well, that is his prerogative, but at the same time, we're, we're, we're trying to undo something and make basically two nonconforming lots again, so.
Well, we can't do, we can't do it. I mean, it's his prerogative to seek this.
It was.
All right, so why don't we do that? We'll get councils.
And, and the person writing it, they have a, a, their engineer, a surveyor stamp, correct?
The engineer who did it?
Yeah.
Of course he is.
Well, who's going to write this letter?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Of course. He's the engineer who did the?
They'll have their license number and everything else on there.
It's the same engineer that did the plan. You're talking about the same engineer who did the plan?
Whatever letter you get.
Yeah.
They'll have their license number and everything on there to make it official.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So I'm going to leave all of these things with you.
Yeah, please do.
The only, the only thing I was hoping, the, the only reason I was trying to do it now is so that, because if it had been, if I had recorded it before January first.
The assessor will pick it up.
Right, and then I, he would have got the tax bill and he would have been very happy.
It's in progress, you know.
I know.
But he won't, he won't have that satisfaction.
He won't get the satisfaction of getting two tax bills. That's what he was waiting for.
He can always make a donation to the town. Fire department, ambulance, school.
No, it was the two tax.
He can send it directly to them. It's right around the corner from his house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very, oh, did you need a motion for adjourn? To move this to the next meeting?
Continuance, what? We, we can make a, someone want to make a motion.
If you don't need it, you don't need it. I'm just asking.
Someone want to make a motion to adjourn this matter to the January, might as well do it.
Yeah, make a motion, I'll make a motion to move this, this item to the January second meeting.
Oh, second.
January second?
January second. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And you want your letter before?
Yeah.
Yeah, before the meeting.
Yeah.
Seven days before preferably. So let's, let's go to, oh, did we, we missed approval of minutes. I apologize. Minutes, everyone review the minutes.
You're bebopping all over the place here.
Yeah, I know. So these are the minutes. We didn't have a meeting last, last meeting in early December, so these would be the minutes of November twenty-one. And we didn't get to approve them then, so we, anybody, any changes, corrections, additions or deletions?
One kind of trivial thing I'm looking at, on page two, under eight P M. The first sentence, Shaw said, it is his recommendation that our notes be removed.
Right.
Does that mean footnotes?
Correct. We, that's, yeah, I might have said notes, but footnotes.
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to change that to footnotes?
I think that would help.
And make it more clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise you could have a note in the text somewhere and that's not what this is. This is a footnote. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved?
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'll go to, back to old business, which is the amending the provisions relating to side yard setbacks in the zoning law.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the January meeting. I'm not prepared to discuss this this evening. It does require a good deal of commentary, I think, so.
Well, here, here's, you know, here just throwing this out. We, we need to, if we're going to do anything for the spring meeting, any bylaws, changes, we need to get it to the town by February four. So if we go to the January second meeting, we're going to have, you know, that's pretty much going to be it before we have a public hearing if we go forward. And we also have, which I took off Herm because I, Terry told me that you didn't want it on, was the T O D. I'm assuming we'll be talking about that on January second also.
Well, we'll be talking about it at some point.
Well, at some point, maybe then, maybe not. But I, I think maybe we should just, you know, this has been, I mean, this has been circulated January third, I'm sorry, December third. It was circulated, so it's been, you know, it's been now over two weeks that everyone's had a copy.
That's true. Not everybody has been in the pink of hell in a period of time.
Oh, I know, you, I grant.
And your, your changes are, are extensive.
Well, they're, they're not that different from what they were before, except I did take up what you had said at the last time this was discussed on the bottom of page three, the midway, page three. And let me say this, Herm, you know, just because we discuss it tonight doesn't mean that you can't come up with something on January second. But I, I mean, there's a motion, I guess, a motion to adjourn this. So let me see, you know, we should see if there's a second. We should shut up and then there's a second. Fine. If not, let's discuss it. A second of that motion?
Come up with a volume? I don't have a number for a volume.
Definition?
Yeah, I can propose something, but I'm not sure exactly where it applies.
Okay.
What are you mentioning?
Yeah, so, so, so Tom had mentioned, when we've talked about this back in, whenever we talked about it. Tom had brought up the idea of rather than gross floor area, which is a definition that already exists, that what we're really looking at is the concept of volume. In other words, everything from the ground plane upwards and, and widthwise. And I didn't really think too much about it till after that meeting. But after it, I started really thinking about it and that real, even when we were discussing this bylaw, that is what we had been talking about, the volume. What is it we actually see?
Conceptually, yes.
Yeah, so, so I started thinking more about it and I thought, you know what, what if? Because I never really liked this idea of gross floor area when other, other places have different definitions of it. Even to the point where we had to have two different, two different definitions for the same thing. So why not just make a totally different definition and insert that into this thing?
It's going to be considered a major change at the time of town meeting. It is going to be a re-argument of what already exists.
Yep, yep, I understand that.
And I dare say that the opposition will rear its ugly head and what we have now is likely to be lost.
Well, it wouldn't be lost. It wouldn't be lost, it would stay there.
It would just stay there.
Yeah.
Everything would stay the same. If, if it's not approved at town meeting, everything that's in the bylaw now would remain.
Correct.
It wouldn't like be gone. So I wouldn't worry about that. But, you know, we, we obviously have to do, if we want, if the, if this board wants to kind of reaffirm its intention with this bylaw, something needs to be done now.
Well, that's, I mean, that's certainly something that I wholly support, completely support. I just, I fear that then the effort to try to refine what in fact we would like to refine will also be lost. And therefore, why not try to limit the change to that which will establish what we want to establish without, not confusing the audience, but arousing in the minds of the audience that this is more than what it appears to be. That remains. In other words, if, if the goal is to make this clearer from the standpoint of total, and all we really started here with is whether or not this is total gross floor area for all structures on a property or whether it only applies to new structures on the property or whether it, you know, that, that's what seemed to be the wrinkle when we last talked about this. Then, then that's what we should be going for. And we talked about inserting some words, either in the definition, the gross floor area or in the definition of gross floor area on page, whatever that is, page three. As well as making changes within the wording associated with residential buildings. Area and dimensions requirements for those. So again, I say, limit the changes to that which is of necessity because I do think that the effort to try to have approved, this rewriting will be difficult.
Can I speak on?
Yeah, hard to know, Bud.
It's not hard to know, because we were there.
No, I want to address that. My original concept about the volume was applying this to the seven thousand square foot maximum. If you don't have two acres, you're limited to seven thousand foot of gross area. And that clearly was an issue about visibility, how much of your sight field is blocked. And so that's what I was thinking was the primary application. You could also use it for the setbacks.
But if you use volume, then how are you going to establish this volume? And the, and the criticism that came back from the building inspector before when we talked about yet another approach to establishing a structural, a scale for the structure in relation to the size of the lots. He says, oh, well, it's math is beyond the possibility of many people in town. They come to me with applications. They'll never be able to manage that. I'm not going to do it for them. So now all of a sudden, we're talking about volume and it's volume, okay? So what is this volume? This is complete, I understand what you're saying. Volume is really where we're at. Mass is where we're at. But from the standpoint of calculating it.
Well, I think we can do a pretty good estimate by taking the footprint times the height, height above ground.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good estimate of volume.
Yeah, but you see, you've got wings.
Well, if they don't have any footprint?
I mean, it isn't got, most, most structures are not simply a square or rectangle. They're Ls. They're, they're, they're not, they're not the same, they don't have the same roof height throughout the structure. They have dormers.
And, and bough outs. I, I know.
Yeah.
I'm trying to simplify it to say, there is a way to get a first cut.
Also, how are we measuring it now?
Just, just the perimeter, just the gross floor area. That's the way we do it. That's pretty straightforward.
Let me make a suggestion. It's, it's hard to evaluate, you know, these two competing methods without seeing one of them. So if, if there's one, Tom, or Tom and Terry, or whoever would like to come up with, I think, then let's, let's have a draft and look at it at, at the next meeting and, and make a decision at the next meeting. We, we need to like, we need to know which way we're going.
Well, I understand Herm's concern. I think he's right.
No, I mean, that's a concern, sure.
It would be difficult to put through a big change like this. If we restrict it to just the seven thousand foot issue.
What do you mean?
Don't put this in anything about setbacks. Just make, for this pass, just make the volume apply to the, what we now call seven thousand foot maximum. Make, make this only for the maximum house size.
And keep the gross floor area for the rest of it?
And keep it for the rest of it for now. And then we, then we've got a foot in the door and it's, it's established for one type of thing.
It's the two different standards.
It is.
It is, it is, you have not spoken with our building inspector enough. You haven't spoken with the zoning board of appeals, the chairman of the zoning board of appeals enough. You know, if you want, if you want to make a correction in this, then let's shoot for the correction first.
Okay.
Before we try to change the approach. And that's my concern.
And, and, you know, that's legitimate, but I, it would be good to, good to see something. And maybe, maybe it won't be satisfactory and we'll forget it and continue with gross floor area. Or maybe it'll be worth, you know, seriously considering. But, but right now, you know, we are operating under a little bit of a time constraint here. And we need to, we need to do something and we need to do something by the next town meeting. And because if we don't, then we're going to be stuck with what, you know, the council's interpretation is of the existing law. And that's going to be the way it is till the next town meeting.
But the thing of it is, is that has been interpreted differently. In other words, the house that went up at eighty-six Marmion Way, I believe it's eighty-six or eighty-five.
Fifty-one?
No, eighty-six or eighty-five. And that was interpreted in accordance with the way, the intent of the bylaw. Now fifty-one Marmion Way, different intent. I mean, the intent was the same, but the interpretation was different. Same building inspector, da-da-da-da. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to, you know, seeing a, a projection of what you're talking about. But you have to show the mechanics. You have to describe the mechanics. So that, and you have to go see Paul. Have to go see Paul and say, hey, Paul, okay, so here we are, we're trying to improve. Have to go see Paul and say, "Hey, Paul, okay, so here we are, we're trying to improve this. And this is what we are proposing. And now we want to project the volume." And, um, serious response.
Yeah, he, he's, you know, we're, we're definitely going to get his input because I think that's important. And we may not agree with what he says, but he obviously has a different view of the application of the existing bylaw from what this board thinks it is. I mean, his view is different.
Well, I think it was brought to light at that, at 51 Marmion Way because of the fact that there is a, a separate garage.
Yeah.
And that, and that brought into his mind the concept of separation between a primary dwelling and a, and a secondary dwelling, and then a side setback for the secondary dwelling. So, um, that's what he was talking about. Um, you know, I looked down the road further and I say, "Well, jeez, they could combine, they could connect the garage and the house. It would then be a simply one structure as opposed to a house and a, and a secondary or an ancillary structure." And, um, you know, so I see them playing games potentially, or anybody playing games. And that's not what we want either.
Right.
So, because then they've moved the side setback over to 10 feet as opposed to it being in relation to the structure, the size of the entire structure.
Well, his, his statement to me when I talked to him about this, this is before, actually before 51 even came up, was that he was concerned that it would, you know, unnecessarily constrain a lot owner because you have to have a 15-foot separation between an accessory structure.
That's what I'm saying.
And the main building. And then if you have this 20-foot setback from the side yard and you get those two things, you've got, you know, 35 feet right there. So, okay, bottom line is, um, is there anything else other than this new definition?
Well, that, that...
That we want to talk about tonight?
Yeah, so that's a, that's an idea. Getting back to Herm's point though, and your writing here, whoever came up with this. Do we actually have a definition of aggregated gross floor area?
Yeah, right. What's aggregated? Is there not a, is there not a term, in other words, total GFA? Um, can we not use total GFA as opposed to aggregated? Because aggregated is going to confuse a hell of a lot of people too.
Yeah, yeah. I looked it up, you know, I looked, yeah, I looked it up. I mean, aggregated is a pretty common word. It means, um, for buildings, okay. With 4,000 to 5,900 square foot of aggregated gross floor area. Meaning, you take the gross floor area and you aggregate it combined. And it's got to be, if it's within 4,000 to 5,000, 4,000 to 5,900, then this is what applies. But if someone doesn't like the word aggregated...
I know, I like the term aggregated.
What's a different word?
No, no. What I'm saying is, because we have people that are going to pick this apart, just like they picked apart this, this other law. Of the other words. Which, you know, they knew what the intent was, but they figured out a way to work around it. Our job, I guess we didn't do our job good enough, which is okay. Do we need to define aggregated gross floor area?
We could, we could do that.
You know what I'm saying?
We could do that, sure, I know what you're saying, sure. That, that would be, that would be easy.
Yeah.
And maybe that's, maybe that would make, you know, make it crystal clear.
Because it's in, it's in this, um, the floor area and site setbacks. The term aggregate gross floor area is in there?
Yeah. Okay, defined, so you're, you're thinking, Terry, that we should have a definition of aggregated gross floor area?
If we, if that is an actual definition so that there's no confusion, this is exactly what we mean by this.
Got it. So, there's no confusion, all right.
And then, on a different, different track was Tom's idea about the volume thing.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right, so, while I do that, I'll, I'll take a shot at aggregated gross floor area.
It should be fairly straightforward.
It should be straightforward, yeah.
I agree with you. It's a, it's a common term, I'm not disagreeing with that.
But I, I agree with you that, why not do that? So, there's no, is there any other, looking at this, is there any other issue or concern that anybody has?
Well, the, you, you did suggest, in other words, or keep the language. And I would prefer keeping the language that exists on page three.
In the bottom.
As opposed to the paragraphs. I don't think the paragraphs, you know, make it easier to understand. I think they make it more difficult to understand.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No, I, I agree. We talked about it and I...
You'd want to, you agree to keep, that we should keep this language on the bottom of page three? Okay. Yeah, you, you also hang?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Tom, you have any?
No thought.
Okay, so fine, that's fine, yeah. Yeah. And then a definition of aggregated gross floor area.
Just trying to prevent any wiggle room, is all.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so for the next, so why don't we do this? Then it sounds like there's a consensus, keeping this language that's there with the modifications on the middle of page three and getting rid of the rest of it. Gross floor area, we need to keep that.
You have to keep it.
For now.
Yeah.
And then Tom's going to maybe take a shot at volume and we'll have that for our next meeting.
And if the volume thing doesn't work out because of it's too complicated, then it doesn't work out. But it's, it's a, it's a good idea that I think needs exploring at least.
And then maybe we'll have something we can actually go to a public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Sound okay?
Yeah, let's, let's see what time comes up with, with regard to the volume.
Yeah, okay.
We, we don't have any limits on volume. We, no, no numbers jump out at me and say...
No, no, I'm, I'm with you, but it's a, I just think it's an idea that needs to be explored at least.
Well, it would be, help me to see it on paper.
At first blush, it would be your gross floor area times 10, average height of the ceiling, right?
Say that again?
Your first cut estimate of volume would be your gross floor area times an average ceiling height.
Well, roof height, uh, roof...
Well...
Floor area is all the separate floors, you've counted them, so you only count each...
It's true. But it's, but it's whether you calculate the volume or whether you simply use up to seven feet and that which is above seven feet.
One of the limitations of having just a floor area as your limit is that you could have a building with eight-foot ceilings or a building with 12-foot ceilings and the volume is different by a factor of one and a half.
Yeah, but the, the fact is that we have a 30-foot limit.
Yeah.
Okay, so they can have an eight-foot ceiling, but then they can't do whatever they want to do on the next two stories. I mean, they, they are constrained. They're constrained by virtue of what they do to the first law.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you'll come up with something.
Okay.
All right, unless there's more discussion on this, I'd move on to member items. Is there anything anybody wants to bring to the board's attention? If not...
Do we want to talk about population estimates?
Uh, you can bring it up.
Well, the, the context is, this, the school was looking for an override and there's a declining school population. And some people have hopes of reversing that decline or arresting it. And I wonder if we have a role in weighing in on the expected demographics.
We have tried. This has been under discussion, sure, and brought it up last meeting, two meetings here, whatever. Fact that there was a group that went from here up to Mount Desert Island. Um, and we looked at the trust up there to try to then bring that principal back here to build small houses and try to increase the population. Um, there is a great reluctance to take land in Rockport and use it for residential development. There is a very strong influence in town to try to make green or maintain green, anything that is currently green. The two conflict. And until there is a, not a meeting in the minds, but a discussion of the implications of converting or maintaining everything green, what that means for the schools, whether or not you, you know, do you want a high school in Rockport or not? And to come to the town in March or April and to suggest an $899,000 override to simply maintain what we currently have, which is not only a decreasing school enrollment, which is not just the last two years, the last five, 10 years, if...
Since 2003, it's been declining.
Yeah, it's been declining steadily. And it's been compensated for by students coming in with vouchers. On, that's no way to efficiently run a, a town. We have a $31 million budget. We, 16 and a half of it is schools. 5.3 or 5.5 is, um, children with needs. Um, we can't do this. Um, and at the same time, frustrate the ability of young families to come in to, in a sense, buttress the school age population will work. So, on, you know, I've, I was on that committee. I can only, I know who seemingly has strong feelings about green in town. Um, the town is already over 60%, or not already, it is still over 60% green. 61% green. Um, and to convert anything to residential in town is, is an anathema. It's just very strong feelings.
Well, part of the, to add to that, Herm, is that, and, and, you know, I don't know where this discussion is going, but the, the population of people over 55, I think, is now over, more than half of the population of the town of Rockport. And it's been going in that direction for, for some time. So, people over 55 generally don't have school age kids. That's the other issue.
Well, the other issue too is a lot more second homes.
Yeah, true.
Which their, their kids wouldn't be students here, even if...
Or people retiring here, they, they have a second home and then it becomes their primary home.
No, but I'm saying, even if somebody has school age children, if they have a second home here, they're not going here.
So, what's, so what do you think, what do you, what do you think the planning board's role is? I, I kind of question whether we had a role in this. It's going to play out certainly when that override issue comes up next, next town meeting.
My thinking is that the, the school board needs to set their budget and figure out what they do, need to do to meet the budget. But they need to be able to do that on a, on some premises to make their plans. And we ought to be in agreement with what the premises are. We shouldn't have the schools looking at some hypothetical increase in student population where, whereas we think it's...
They're not looking at that though, are they?
They're not.
You, you say we need to make sure they're not.
Well, I think we need to make some position about what we expect the future to hold.
Did you read Wally's piece?
Yeah.
All right. And Wally's piece was, he specifically looked at the fifth grade population and said that there were two or three fewer students at the fifth grade level for the next year. And yet, they're going to hire another teacher to teach children at the fifth grade level? And why are you going to do that? We want to maintain morale? Come on.
That's not a good reason.
It's not a good reason. It just doesn't work.
No, I, I agree with that. But I, that's outside our remit.
No, but, but it's, but, but, you know, as the planning board, my, my view of the planning board is, the planning board is involved in planning. That encompasses all planning. Any and all planning associated with the town. Now, we can argue about what the limits are, but I have no limits. The limits, the, the planning board can be involved in anything. And therefore, that's why not only did I join the efforts of the superintendent of schools and the chairman of the school committee and the chairman of the board of selectmen and so forth and so on, by going to Maine and looking at this trust. Um, we talked about it at length. Um, and you were here, I'm sure, for some of those meetings, even though you weren't a member. Um, if there's no interest in doing that sort of thing, then the schools cannot come to us and look for a $900,000 override for the sake of trying to maintain something that can't be sustained.
Well, I guess the issue is right now, and it seems like we're going, you know, these are important issues, but we're, the specific issue, is there something the planning board should consider or say or do in relation to this issue? And I don't, right at this point, I don't see that. I, I mean, I see the TOD, that's, you know, that's something indirectly that theoretically could foster more, uh, school age kids here. Could, could, might not too, but whatever, that's a potential. But, you know, for us to make a pronouncement on the, the future as to the demographics of Rockport, I, I don't feel qualified to do that.
Well, we can state that we have no plans to increase the demographic of interest.
Well, no, but, that's not exactly true. I think, and Herman just discussed it, that, that different methods have been broached or, you know, started and they've been shot down on numerous occasions. And so, to me, it seems, you know, we've, we've kind of already gone there.
There have been proposals, but, but there's no plan, that's my point.
Right, no, no, I agree with you, there's no plan.
Okay.
But along with the no plan is, it's not that we haven't made effort before. And honestly, it was really Herman.
Right.
He, he was doing most of the groundwork on that, but, you know...
Then we can say, in spite of all the proposals and efforts to come up with something, we have no plan.
Correct.
Well, it's, the, the point that I would make is, that was, that was a group of five different committees.
Yeah.
And when you get into a situation where there may be one element in that group of five committees that is willing to put in the effort to try to create a plan and the superintendent of schools can do nothing because he will be undercut. The board, the chairman of the school board has no power at all because they just don't. And the board of selectmen will not, because two of the members on that committee were from the board of selectmen, one of whom is green. It isn't going to happen. It just, that, that, that kind of a bringing together or trying in an effort to try to meet, a meeting of the minds for the sake of trying to correct a downward trend by increasing residences in town won't happen because there's no power there. So, it isn't that we can't, shouldn't, but, um, collectively, it was not going to happen.
All right, this, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I do. The question says, you can, that plan could go through, but, but you're talking about what, how many more students potentially would you have out of that plan, distribute it over 12 grades?
Which plan are you talking about?
Gee...
More residences.
More residences.
Oh, just in general, yeah.
Just in general. And it always, it doesn't come out that that saves the high school.
No, it doesn't necessarily mean...
It does not come out.
It doesn't.
And if you say, "We have to control the school budget" and we say, "We're going to do it by adding houses", you have to look at, the high school is in trouble when you've got to just, well, anyway. When you drive eight miles to the high school, there's plenty big enough for all of the kids, like it or not.
I guess one, one question is, would we be out of line taking a position on the override?
Oh, as a board?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it might not be ready, we might not be ready to do that, but collectively or singularly, I'll take a position on that override, yes.
I don't think we should as a board to take a position on that.
I would have to abstain because my wife's a teacher.
Yeah, right, so the problem's...
I wouldn't do, I wouldn't do that. I, I think, but individually, yeah. I mean, we're all citizens of the town of Rockport and we can take any position we want.
Right.
And I have a feeling I know what a few people are going to say.
Well, I mean, I, I think there's, I think there's logic in, well, maybe a logic in more than one position, but there's certainly logic in one position. And, and that is that to think in terms of Rockport having a high, high school for the indefinite future, forget it. It isn't going to happen.
Well, you know, there's, there's been talk about mergers and, like, other school districts have merged.
Well, they're working on it.
You know, so, all right, I think we've...
Well, I mean, the, the other, the other one element that, that should be mentioned is that Gloucester put in 30,000, Rockport put in 30,000. Um, and there is a study being conducted.
Right.
That in fact, as I understand, won't be completed until after the town meeting. Now, if it is before town meeting, it's within, um...
I doubt it.
Two days. I don't think it'll happen.
No.
So, therefore, to come to the town and ask for a $900,000 override before there, the study has been completed, that hurts too.
I agree.
Okay, well, let's see how this goes. I would say, maybe it's just a little too soon. Okay, next, I, any other member items? If not, I'm going to move to approval of bills. We have a $75 bill from Seaside Graphics for the creation of a, an enlarged zoning map. So, we need approval for that. Anyone make a motion to approve that $75 bill? Anyone make a motion to approve that seventy-five-dollar bill?
I make a motion to approve the seventy-five-dollar bill from Seaside Graphics.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Could I, 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 let me go to, go back to member, I've got a question that might come up. Tom, you met last night with the green people?
Yes.
And I'm on a committee, or I said I would work with the people in Gloucester working on aggregate of electricity, purchasing electricity as a group from Beverly to Rockport and so forth, and I, and I was gonna ask, I'll ask Tom a question, but that might, that sort of thing, if it ever happened, it would, might even entail, down the road, putting up, uh, so, solar, solar units around the, the recycle center and all of that sort of stuff, or other places around town. Just to know that work is, well, where effort is going on in some fashion.
Well, we have our solar overlay district at the, near the transfer station, four and a half acres.
But nobody, nobody's actively pursuing that.
Well, that's, but, but there is a group, there is a group actively working on that, with the idea, or they're gonna have a, a meeting with an expert out of the, out of the state to try and get from Beverly to Rockport people together to, to talk about how we go about doing that. The idea would be to collectively, collectively, uh, generate enough electricity priced below, or about, at least below, a little bit below what the power company's cost of electricity is.
With the higher renewables content.
Higher renewables content, yeah, it's all aimed at renewables, yeah, yeah.
Which Gloucester already has, and their...
Which they have.
Contract expires in twenty-twenty-one, so that puts them in the game for a larger aggregation.
So, yeah.
So their, their association with the windmills ceases in twenty-twenty-one?
No, no, this is just a residential use of electricity, automatically went to this new contract unless someone opted out.
Yeah.
Doesn't really go to the wind turbines.
So anyway, efforts are going on in that area.
But the, the idea of having a solar field is an incentive that makes it easier for the aggregator...
Right.
...to put the deal together.
Right, so that's a good word, of aggregated.
Uh-huh, Gloucester only has the turbines, they have no panels?
I'll define it.
Or they have a solar farm?
Uh, I don't think they have a significant solar...
That's what I thought.
...on the municipal side.
Yeah.
Because there's a limit to what a municipality can get in terms of their allowable's from the state, and the turbines more or less fill it up.
Fill it up, got it.
Okay.
They're trying to get around that, but good luck.
Okay.
Let's, let's move on to public discussion, unless somebody has something more. Toby?
Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite Street. I think Tom Meekus's interest in the volume of buildings, you know, is something very much worth pursuing, but I don't see it as being useful in context of changing to make effective the regulations you now have. I think that's a separate venture. I would ask that you go and look at the building that you did the site plan review for, the captain's house next to Tom's house on Marmion Way. It seems to have what looks very much like a third floor. Maybe it meets the letter of the law, and maybe it doesn't. If it meets the letter of the law, the letter of the law is clearly defective, and you need to change things there, too. I object to almost everything that Herman earlier said about schools and housing. I'm one of the demons. He says that the plans of the Mount Desert Cabal have been shot down. Frankly, that's nonsense, they haven't got off the ground. By his own account, they haven't met since April, so no one else is to blame if they've not made, made any progress. And it suits me that they've not made any progress. The statement, I wasn't sure whether it was jesting or derisive from Hank Betts' control of the school budget by adding houses. I trust he was kidding, because one child in the schools costs, you know, fifteen thousand dollars plus, and as you are well aware, the only houses that, where the owners pay such taxes are trophy houses along the water, perhaps the one at fifty-one Marmion Way that you're so stirred up about. And something was said in that discussion that I find hard to follow. I didn't realize that aside from the fire department regulations, which aren't in your control, there was any control on the distance between buildings and accessory structures. Is there?
There is.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that explains that. And for that property, I mentioned it before, and I don't know whether you checked it out, I would ask that you look at the plans again and see about the setbacks from the high tide mark. I don't know, but the setbacks are not from the edge of the lot, which would be mean-low water, they're from the high tide mark. Would you do that?
We've already been told that in fact, if the building has begun, that absolutely nothing will be done by the board of selectmen.
Well, that's just Sarah Wilkinson's disgraceful remark.
You miss, you misheard me. I, Toby, you misheard me. I never, I never said that it was appropriate to add schoolchildren.
Good, thank you. I mean, you may desperately want schoolchildren, but it's not the way out of the...
Hold it, let me speak, let me speak.
Toby, listen, you actually said the opposite.
Yeah, I said the opposite, Toby, but I want that in the record.
Good. You liked it, then I misunderstood.
You did.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Zee?
Zee, Zee Sappala, ninety-two Granite Street. One of the things that happened at last night's DPW commissioners' meeting was another issue that's related to these housing issues, and that's the sewage treatment plant's capacity. And they discussed last night for time immemorial, inflow and infiltration, and I found out that basically, they, the state will not relax the affluent permit that's going out to Sandy Bay unless the town can show that it's reduced excessive inflow and infiltration. They've never been able to show that. The second thing was that if they ever actually did accomplish removing that excessive I and I, they would have to show a rationale to increase the permit capacity from the sewage treatment plant. So there's two things, they'd have to eliminate the stuff that shouldn't be treated, and then they'd have to show a reason why the town has a reason, a good reason, to increase what's being discharged out into Sandy Bay. As a result of what that discussion was going on, Tom Meekus had been involved in doing some kind of regression analysis to try and determine, you know, whether or not there's some correlation between more housing, I guess this is what it is, between more housing and more sewage flow. And, and Tom has said that the only thing he can find from his data is that when it rains, they have more info, inflow to the plant. So, the thing I thought, thing that I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to find out from Tom tonight, is he said that he thought, based on the figures that he did have, that this situation is really actually more dire insofar as capacity than what they think. Was that, did I hear that right?
I guess that here...
Well, you, I mean, is this, does this have anything to do with...
Yes, because it involves housing.
I mean, if you guys wanna have a conversation about this, fine.
Town meeting has asked the selectmen of DPW and the planning board to get together to...
Yeah, I know, and I'm, who's the liaison from the planning board?
Well, that's me.
Okay.
So, I don't know if this is the...
Well, I, I didn't, you know, now that, you wanna talk about this now?
I'm happy to give a short answer, or we can...
Go ahead, give a short answer.
The comment I made at DPW meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, so I don't know what happened afterwards. My comment was that in looking at the Kleinfelder report, they set sort of a, a current usage, and the number they picked was to look at a thirteen months' worth, each month being a twelve-month rolling average. And that's just sort of a crazy approach, because what our discharge permit is limited by is a twelve-month rolling average. And so I looked at the data, and there were a couple of months with a higher, significantly higher, twelve-month rolling average. I think that should be the, the baseline that we have now, and that Kleinfelder said that we are currently using less than that. So I, I disagree with the basis that Kleinfelder chose.
Okay, I'll talk to you later, privately.
It's, it's complicated.
Just one quick thing, and then we can go. The three months that there's more is what three months, do you remember? Is it several months?
Uh, yeah, I think it was, uh...
There's more what, usage?
There was more rain in those months.
Capacity, yeah, more rain.
More vol, more volume coming into the plant.
Yeah, I guess the other comment I could make about the inflow, inflow and infiltration is that the, the most recent program where they put the liners in to decrease it was in fall of twenty-fifteen.
Yeah.
And the sewer flow went down, it came back up. It's right back where it was before that program. So we did not enact a permanent reduction. The I and I program...
Any thoughts on that?
It may have been overwhelmed by increasing rainfall, but, I mean, this is a four-year period.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they lined the pipes, did they not?
They did. Maybe that's not where the problem was.
So isn't it, isn't it, houses with the water, putting it back in the system? That's what I think it is.
You know, a bunch of years ago, though, I remember them going around, and my house was one of them, that they, I wasn't hooked up to it anyway, but they had that smoke coming out, remember that?
Yeah. See where things were going.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for being...
Yeah, I didn't realize you were doing this. I, I mean, like, a year ago, I was supposed to be on this committee, but it didn't do anything.
Yeah, you flunked.
They never had a meeting.
That's why we made you chairman.
They never had a meeting, so...
I don't wait for meetings, give me some data and...
Did you, did you attend a meeting?
There was no meeting, I just got with Joe Berisi and got reams of data and...
Yeah, I thought maybe there, maybe there'd be something extraordinary, like a meeting, as there's supposed to be.
They're holding off on a meeting because they don't understand why...
Some numbers are wrong.
The water plant flow...
That's right.
Doesn't agree with the sewer flow.
It's like twenty percent different.
Yeah, and they think maybe the meters are wrong, and...
Yeah, that's crazy. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Submerge.
Second.
Second. Hank, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone, happy holidays.